Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley.
President.
Commissioner Schuster.
President.
Commissioner Giacomo.
President.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Here. Could y'all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thanks for tuning out tonight. We got a rather lengthy meeting tonight, so... I know most of you will leave after the first few things, but thank you. Couple of announcements. Next regular city commission meeting will be Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, 6:00 PM here in the chambers. We have a notice of a potential quorum, a quorum of the Raton City Commission may attend the You Make a Difference Award Ceremony on April 25th at 9:00 AM at Longfellow Elementary School. And the rest we've got, we've got five proclamations tonight. So we'll kick it off with Drinking Water Week, May 4th through 10th. Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay, proclamation Drinking Water Week, May 4th through 10th, 2025. Whereas water follows a natural cycle from earth to air to earth again, and whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature, and whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy, and whereas any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth, and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water, and whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend, and the citizens of Raton should have a safe dependable water, supply of water now and into the future. Now therefore does James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton hereby proclaim May 4th through 10th, 2025 as Drinking Water Week in the City of Raton and urges all citizens to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. And witness, he has set his hand and caused a seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this 22nd day of April, 2025. All right.
You guys holding on to this?
There we go. Oh, you can't see me, you know how to get in the middle.
All right. Thanks, guys. Appreciate you.
Thanks, guys. Alrighty, next up we have Commissioner Schuster with Behavioral Health Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2025.
All right. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there is a strong research that diet, exercise, sleep, stress management can all help all Americans protect their health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from behavioral health services from seeking help, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizens share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsible responsibility to promote mental health wellness and support prevention efforts. Now therefore does James Neil Sagata, Mayor of the City of Raton hereby... Raton, New Mexico, does hereby proclaim the month of May, 2025, as Behavioral Health Mental Health Awareness Month. And we urge all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Raton to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health and steps, uh, steps that citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health concerns. In witness whereof, he has set his hand and seal and caused the seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this 22nd day of April, 2025.
Next up we have Commissioner Giacomo with Motorcycle Awareness Month, May 2025.
Proclamation Motorcycle Awareness Month, May 5th, 2025. Whereas motorcycles are used as a regular means of transportation for the community during recreation in Raton, New Mexico, and whereas in Raton City, where we make motorcycles very popular and a popular destination for riders from across the country, and whereas the safe and operation of motorcycles require that the use of skills, the wire skills, develop the combination of training and experience. The use of good judgment and thorough knowledge of the traffic laws and licensing requirements, and whereas it is very important that the riders residents of Raton be aware, show respect, or consideration, and share the roadways with the motorcycles on the streets and highways, and recognize that for motorcycle safety, and whereas the national way traffic safety and motorizing is shared, May is Motorcycle Awareness Month. It is, it is the desire of the office of the mayor to join the NHTSA in raising awareness of the growing number of motorcycles on Raton, these roadways, in order to help prevent accidents from most importantly save lives. And whereas therefore it is out that James Neil Sagata, the junior mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim May 25th as Motorcycle Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to be observant, courteous, and knowledgeable about motorcycles usage in their community. And witness, whereas I here proclaim and set Neil's hand for the seal cause in the city of Raton to be affixed this 22nd day of April, 2020. Thanks, Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of Raton.
All right, and we have Commissioner Honeyfield with the 56th Annual Municipal Clerks Week, May 4th through 10th, 2025.
Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between citizens, local governing bodies, and the agencies of the government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and partiality rendering equal service to all. And whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center of function of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore do I, James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, recognize the week of May 4th through May 10th, 2025 as Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our city clerk Desiree Trujillo, Deputy Clerk Michael Ann Antinucci, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. And witness herof, I have heretofore set my hand and seal and caused the seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this 22nd May of April, 2025.
And finally, we have a proclamation for the 2025 Great American Main Street Award winner, Raton Main Street. Proclamation, Raton Main Street Arts and Cultural District recipients of the 2025 Great American Main Street Award, April 22nd, 2025. Whereas the Raton Main Street Arts and Cultural District guided under the leadership of Ms. Brenda Ferry and the Board of Directors received the 2025 Great American Main Street Award in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania on Monday, April 7th, 2025. And whereas the Raton Main Street Arts and Cultural District was selected by a national jury of industry professionals and local leaders in economic development and historic preservation for their efforts in preserving and revitalizing Raton downtown. And whereas the Raton Main Street Arts and Cultural District not only exemplifies the soul of a thriving Main Street community, but also serves as a model of advancement and innovation for Main Street programs across the state, region, and the nation. And whereas the Raton Main Street Arts and Cultural Application was a rare first-time applicant recipient for the award, and only the second New Mexico city to receive the award since Silver City in 2011. And whereas in a statement from Aaron Barnes, President and CEO at Main Street America remarked, "Raton Main Street's remarkable revitalization efforts showcase the power of preservation-based economic development. With decisive leadership and a community-focused commitment to historic preservation, they have not only honored Raton's storied past, but also built the foundation for a vibrant and resilient community for generations to come." And whereas the Raton Main Street Arts and Cultural District leadership and Raton community leadership traveled to the 2025 Great American Main Street Conference in Philadelphia, where they met with communities across the nation, providing a great experience for the team and shined a positive spotlight on our community. Now therefore do I, James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2025 as Raton Main Street Arts and Cultural District Day in the City of Raton and surrounding communities, and ask the people of our communities to express pride in these community volunteers and thank them for a job well done. Witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and seal and caused the seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this 22nd day of April, 2025. Yeah, that would not have gone on the plane.
It's just a little heavy.
Very heavy.
It's just a big thing.
Brenda Jewell, Chris, want to say anything real quick?
Thank you. And we couldn't have done this without all of you because this is a team effort. And without the support of our city partners and our state partners, we wouldn't succeed. So, thank you very much. And we're very proud of this award, but this award is for our little city here, so, thank you.
Thank you for all of you. All right, this time we'll start committing reports from commissioners. Commissioner Honeyfield. Commissioner Giacomo. Commissioner Schuster.
All right. April 11th, I attended the Regulation and Licensing Board meeting that was held in Santa Fe. April 16th, I believe is when the Lodge Text Board meeting was held, but I was unable to attend. April 18th, I met with Secretary Mark Roper from Economic Development Department for New Mexico and just discussed some in general things that we could do better with our lead on agreements. And then I believe Commissioner Chatterley will provide the report that she and I were both at the Water Board meeting.
Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley.
All right, I'm sorry.
Oh, you got one more? I'm sorry.
Me too, because this one's the most important.
Okay.
All right, so, um, the... I'm pleased to share with some of the fantastic news from the Al Raton Media Works. Our youth mentorship program has seen incredible achievements at this prestigious 2025 Film Prize Junior Festival. Two films created by our Raton students, Time Kids and Demons and Angels, competed against a record number of submissions. And across the state, Time Kids won for the Best Middle School Sci-Fi Fantasy Award. And even more impressively, both films went on to win the Virtual Festival Audience Choice Awards that were held and for only two categories that existed, high school and middle school. So please join us in celebrating these young filmmakers at their hometown premiere this Sunday at 4:00 PM at the Al Raton Theater. There's also a $500 prize awarded to these filmmakers. And the award came from the Virtual Audience Choice Award. So it's quite impressive, and we should be very proud of our youth and the Al Raton Media Works for working with them.
Absolutely.
There you go.
Any more?
No, that's it.
All right. Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay, I have, I've had a really busy little while, and I missed last month from the fly-in for Ports to Plains. So I have a few reports to make. For Ports to Plains, I've met a couple times. We met on the 7th to discuss the congressionally-directed spending for New Mexico for this year with NMDOT, Ports to Plains, the Eastern Plains Council of Governments, and Better Cities, and kind of discuss that. On the 24th through the 27th, I attended the fly-in in Washington DC and our board meeting. I have extensive notes and have shared them with city staff. If anyone would like a copy, just let me know if you need to sleep well tonight. But I will give a couple highlights. At our DC board meeting, we discussed that no fiscal year 25 CDS monies of any kind made it through Congress. So Raton will be re-requesting last year's alignment study for 1.6 million plus 400K NMDOT match. And Ports to Plains, the alliance, will make a request on behalf of the entire corridor for the alignment of everything between Clayton and Raton. And that's a $2 million ask plus a 500K New Mexico DOT match. Those funding monies, if funded, would go directly to NMDOT, and they would put the match in there. We made visits to all of the New Mexico delegation and house and staff office visits. Mayor Pro Tim Kobe Beckner from Clayton was the other New Mexico Ports to Plains Alliance member, and several other members and lobbyists joined, and Ports to Plains staff joined us, and we in turn joined them in their visits. And we kind of go around in a kind of a big group in all these appointments. And our visits were well received. The highlight was probably Senator Lujan himself attending our entire meeting to discuss what's going on in Clayton and Raton, which was pretty amazing for him to spend that time. Overall, we are seeking funding so we can have the best possible outcome for planning funds to make sure all the communities from Clayton to Raton have a say in this interstate alignment. And a big thanks to City Manager Mestas, Jason Phillips, and Ann Tice for working on letters of support and for the fiscal year '26 CDS requests. I did hear from Joe Kylie at Ports to Plains that NMDOT did receive the 1.6 million monies we lobbied for in fiscal year '24 for the Clayton Alignment Study, and that New Mexico DOT has pledged already state monies this year, 1.5 million in addition to that, so they can not just use it for Clayton, but try to get started on the corridor. So anything we fund in these new CDS requests would go towards that effort and future efforts. Our next boarding award meeting will be in June, most likely in Texas. And our annual conference will be in Lubbock in September 30th through October 2nd. North Central New Mexico Economic Development District, on February 27th, I was welcomed in as an executive board member for Colfax County. And I'm replacing the longtime member Landon Newton, who was a great, great man. Still around, just retired. Not, not gone. Well, we worked on various proposals, requests, updates, budgeting, and discussed some of the slowdowns we're experiencing in federal funding, but it seems like all that's been kind of ironed out now. There's just a little bit more that they have to do. And then we discussed some of the legislative stuff that was up in the session. On the 11th, we had another executive meeting and accepted sadly the resignation of our executive director, Monica Beta. However, she's going to stay on as long as possible to transition someone new. And also, we discussed the AAA Director, Mayor Neil Sagata, will be finishing at the end of the year. So also another huge position to replace for the entity. Lots of other typical business was done. Notably, the aging and long-term services contract, which definitely needs some work. They've added a lot of things in that North Central was not very happy about, and things that just weren't necessary, really. I did meet on the 14th with other North Central board members for Colfax County. We have a vacant spot on the main board, and so we are working on filling that spot through the county. I also attended the, on the evening of the 14th, I went over to Simroon for the Colfax County Comprehensive, it's called the SEDS, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy for the county. We gave input on all kinds of stuff in the county, one of those meetings, but this plan is really important and matters for funding. Typically, if you don't have this plan, there's a lot of different funding buckets you can't dip into. So it will have a lot of data that it gathers. It will make all kinds of suggestions for future resilience with economic development. Our next meeting is this Thursday in the morning for the executive board, and Thursday afternoon for the full board in Santa Fe. I was asked to serve on the Raton Clayton Interchange Artwork Committee for Exit 451 makeover. That's going to be the double diamond bridge that they took public input in for a while ago. It is about 30% complete and designed, so we have a members of the community that are representatives for this. The DOT, Moles &amp; Corbin, and Bohana Houston. So they had us discuss like Raton's history and culture and our landscapes, and what we might see as important for the design of that bridge, bridge work, which is, I was just expecting just a bridge. So I was super excited that it's going to be a beautiful bridge. We talked about our branding, and I shared all those documents and brand style guides. We talked about kind of a gateway feeling. We talked about not only the artwork underneath the bridge, but the main part of the bridge, I don't even know what you call the railings. All of that representing our area, so that's kind of exciting. And so we created standards and will be soliciting artists. I think that's already underway on a platform called Cafe. And once we have everything submitted, that I think we have, whenever they opened it up, about 30 days, and then we select the top five and narrow down to one. And there'll be community engagement at some point where you can see some of these cool designs. And it's kind of interesting, the artist is not down there on the road painting. They create the art and it is installed, and they work with the engineers once they're chosen. So it's a pretty cool process. I'm super excited about that. Of course, I attended with everyone else Municipal Day. What was notable is I had a board meeting after that with the Municipal League. The audit was complete with no findings, and they're looking at a new streamlined focused policy process for 2026, which is going to change quite a bit how we do things at the Municipal League for that, so that's pretty important. And then annual conference is September 16th through the 18th in Redoso. On the 17th, I chaired the district meeting and was re-elected as the District 3 Director for the board with the term ending April 30th, 2027. I think most, a bunch of us, I just thought this was notable for people to know this is going on. So there is a movie that's been produced called Preserved about Vermajo, and it is incredible. I was at, we were, many of us attended the premiere, and that will be coming out in theaters this fall. And it's about Vermajo's history and Ted Turner's conservation efforts. Definitely worth going to see. It's really interesting, and you'll see lots of local movie stars. You'll recognize a lot of people in there. It's pretty cool. I got the privilege of emceeing the watch party as we were watching you all in Philadelphia for the GAMSO Award. That was awesome. The Raton Water Board, we met on the 15th with Commissioner Schuster. Lake Maloya is full and spilling. The filter plant production in March was 23.8 million gallons with a peak flow of .99 million gallons a day. We discussed some water rights topics with our attorney. We agreed to write a letter to unify our feedback for the creation of the state water planning regions that's being done by mainstream New Mexico. That deadline was extended to April 30th. So I encourage everyone, if you have something to say about this effort, get online and go to that mainstream New Mexico site and put in your comments. This whole planning came about because of the 2023 Water Security Act of the state. And I do have a few reservations about it. Other people have some reservations about it. There could be some positive things, but definitely take a look at that. We did pass a resolution that will be considered by the commission to raise construction water rates only. No other rate increases were planned at the time. And that construction water increase is way overdue. I don't think it's been updated since the 80s, 1980 perhaps. We passed the budget, which has a small projected revenue increase included, so we'll be watching that very carefully. They may be doing some hydrant testing while Maloya is spilling. The 3 million gallon tank bid is out and it closes May 6th. And the Simroon system that we thought had all been worked out was having communications issues again, so that's frustrating. I have been working, continuing work with the National Park Service Rivers and Trails Technical Assistance Project. And there is a proposal before the commission tonight of the professional services request that went out regarding trail planning, additional trail planning in the Climax Canyon Goat Hill area. And so those ranked proposals are there. And then the last thing, I do want to share a video that's on YouTube. So as you might recall, I met with
If you've immersed yourself in a Georgia O'Keeffe painting...
If you've immersed yourself in a Georgia O'Keeffe painting, this is a million times better. I mean, nothing can be like standing there in the m- ...from Fonda Creative for Sunrise on Bartlett Mesa. And they interviewed me about how the purchase came about, my own connection to the outdoors, and potential impact the properties would have on Raton's economic development. And we also got to hike on the Buck Ridge Ranch, and their intention with that is to transfer that Buck Ridge Ranch to the City of Raton for an open space park sometime in the future. And just for people who might not know, the Bartlett Mesa purchase, the city used capital outlay funds to help finalize and fill that funding gap. And so it will be in the possession of New Mexico Game and Fish. So I'm hoping we can, I can meet with some of those people in the next month and kind of talk about the timeline of what they're thinking. But they, the Nature Conservancy created this video, and even though it's a little embarrassing, I would love to share it with everyone because the project is so cool and the scenery is incredible, and I cannot wait for everyone who wants to to get up there and enjoy the land. But it's not open yet, so, thank you.
If you've immersed yourself in a Georgia O'Keeffe painting, this is a million times better.
If you've immersed yourself in a Georgia O'Keeffe painting...
If you've immersed yourself in a Georgia O'Keeffe painting, this is a million times better. I mean, nothing can be like standing there in the moment. Being able to see just layers of mesas and the colors, the shadows, these beautiful skies that you feel like you can see forever. New Mexico is the land of enchantment for a reason. You get hooked once you come out and really immerse yourself in it. We're not overrun. You can feel a sense of space. You can feel a sense of aloneness. You can feel a sense of connection. There's so much value in coming out into the outdoors and regaining your perspective If you pull someone out of a coffee shop and ask them why they love living in Rattone, almost the first thing out of their mouth is going to be the natural landscape, the beauty, the open spaces, the clean air. But there's a lot of negativity around our economy. We had a lot of mind closures. The railroad industry, major industries that almost every family was touched by in some way, had a downturn. And so it's been a scramble to try to keep our population and to keep them employed in good jobs. So in 2020, we asked for some outside help to come in and help us with economic development, things that might help our economy. And one of the main things that they identified was outdoor recreation. We were sitting around in someone's living room and talking about this Bartlett Mesa ranch had come up for sale. As we're talking, we're thinking, you know, our little budget can't do much. What can we do? We started the conversation and we reached out to the Nature Conservancy. After the Nature Conservancy and Trust Republic Lands got involved, it really just spiraled. They caught that vision. They started helping do all these things that our little town can't do on our own.
This is Bartlett Mesa. It's about a 2,200 acre ranch that we acquired in conjunction with the Trust Republic Land. The vision for this property and what is currently underway is for it to transfer to the state of New Mexico, to be managed as an extension to Sugar Creek Canyon State Park. That was the original vision for this area. And then there's a parcel behind us that actually connects the top of Bartlett Mesa here, all the way down to town that came up for sale. And that is what we call the Buck Ridge Ranch. Our goal is to transfer that property to the city of Rattone, to be managed as an open space park. What we have here is a connectivity project. Those two ranches connect the town of Rattone via a series of public lands to the Southern High Plains. As we look at this landscape as a whole, there are places where development has really made a significant impact. You can see this big 450 parcel plus subdivision. Once a large ranch has been broken apart like that, there's no reassembling that. The impact in this case is that they put a subdivision right in the middle of a really heavily trafficked wildlife corridor. The demand is already here to split up the landscape in a way. And there is the potential for a lot more of these wide open spaces to look just like that, which could be problematic for wildlife. And wildlife, of course, is one of the reasons that people really enjoy living in this area. So the time is now to focus on how development is impacting the landscape before it gets away from us all. TNC is uniquely positioned to do some of these large land acquisition projects. And to see it here in Rattone benefiting the community in the light of public access and that connection between biodiversity focused conservation and recreation. It seems like the way of the future and this is just such a stunning landscape to develop that type of model.
It is exciting that this big chunk of the work is done, that the land is acquired. That is not something we could have ever done on our own. But there's still a lot of work to be done and it's really important that it rolls out in a way that is thoughtful of the land itself, of the flora and fauna here, and the usage to keep that value there. Gets me kind of emotional because it was kind of just a dream for our little community to be able to build our economy through outdoor recreation. To me, it's a quality of life element of enjoying nature and feeling that reset in your life. And it just gives you this perspective. I have never found it anywhere else.
We'll go over your Audit Service Team for both RPS and the city. We will go over management's responsibilities for the audit. We'll go over the auditor's responsibilities for the audit. I'll go over some required communications that I'm required to discuss with you all. We'll talk about what were the actual audit results. And then at the end, I'll open up the floor for any questions, comments, and the like. So for fiscal year 2024, here is your Audit Service Team. I'm there at the top. I am the principal that oversaw both the RPS and the city's audits. Underneath me is Mr. Josh Trujillo. He is a principal as well with the SJT Group. He performed the quality control review of the fiscal year 2024 audits. So he reviewed the reports, work papers, and made sure that they are in accordance with our auditing standards, as well as our firm's internal quality control standards. And then the personnel that assisted with the engagement, we had Mr. Jake Connor. He is a manager with the SJT Group. We have Mr. Michael McGinnley, who is also a manager. And then we had Mr. Eric Gilpin, who is a Senior Audit Associate with the firm. And then we had two staff members assisting us with the audit. We had Mr. Cody Paulin and Mr. Nick Ikewall. Now, what are some of management's responsibilities for the audit and for each of the organizations? Management is responsible for establishing the accounting policies and procedures for the organizations. That includes all of the internal, setting up the internal control structures for the organizations over the significant transaction cycles for each of the organizations. Significant transaction cycles include cash receipts, so money coming in, cash disbursements, so disbursements to vendors, disbursements to employees, as well as grants management, making sure that there are controls in place to ensure that the city and RPS are complying with any grants or regulations that they are subject to. Management is also responsible for establishing the accounting systems and making sure that those systems are functioning as intended to accomplish the organization's financial reporting responsibilities. Management is also responsible for any significant estimates that go into the financial statements. For RPS and for the city, some significant estimates include the allowance for any doubtful accounts receivable. So any amounts due from customers or due from grantors where there may be issues or subjectivity related to collectibility of amounts due. Management is responsible for identifying any of those amounts and coming up with an estimate for any of those uncollectible accounts. Another significant estimate would be establishing the useful lives of plant, property, and equipment. So making sure that those are in line with industry standards and that the useful lives of assets have been established. Management is overall responsible for the preparation of the financial statements and disclosures. Now, we are permitted and we do assist with the preparation of the financial statements, but management reviews them, goes over them, and ultimately, the preparation and the financial statements themselves is a responsibility of management. Now, at the end of the audits, and this is for both RPS and the city, management signs a representation letter. And what that letter is, is basically management attesting and accepting responsibility for these matters that I've just discussed, as well as other matters such as full transparency, that we've been given access to all personnel records, and things of that nature. Now, what is the auditor's responsibility for the audit? We are ultimately responsible for providing an opinion about whether or not the financial statements are materially correct in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles here in the United States. Now, you may be wondering what materially correct means. What materially correct means is that there could be, not that there is, but there is a possibility that there could be small trivial or inconsequential errors in the financial statements. But if those errors did exist, those minor errors would not impact the decision of a user of your financial statement. So if a grantor was going to decide whether to grant the city and RPS money or if a lender was going to make a decision on those financial statements, they are materially correct and that should, the users of those financial statements should be able to rely on those financial statements to ultimately make their decision. And if there were any errors in there, ultimately those errors would be so small, it wouldn't impact the decision made on the financial statements. Now, we perform our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, which are promulgated by the AICPA, as well as government auditing standards, which are promulgated by the U.S. Government Accountability Office. This is because the city and RPS are governmental entities and in accordance with state statute, you are required to have your audit conducted in accordance with those standards. Those standards require that we obtain an understanding of internal controls of both organizations sufficient enough to plan the audit. So we do this through obtaining policies and procedures, interviewing various personnel, and identifying key controls over those key transaction cycles that I mentioned, such as cash receipts, cash disbursements to vendors and employees, grant compliance. We identify those key controls and we evaluate the design and we walk through those controls. We verify their implementation. So if a disbursement to a vendor requires a purchase requisition, a purchase order, three quotes, an invoice, and two check signers, we pick a sample of disbursements and we make sure and test to determine if all of those required things are present for those transactions. Now, with that said, we don't give an opinion on the internal controls. So we don't state whether or not your internal controls are effective or ineffective. However, as we're performing our test work, if we identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control, we are required to report that to you all. And those, if any, are identified in the financial statements themselves. Now, as I mentioned, because you're a governmental entity that is required to comply with various state statutes, we are required to perform tests of compliance related to various state statutes. Some of the most significant statutes that we test for compliance relate to the procurement code, which is Chapter 13 NMSA 1978, as well as travel and per diem statutes, and the overall state audit rule. Here are some of the required communications that I'm required to go over with you all. This first slide here is pertaining to the city of Raton. So as we were working through the audit, we did have 26 adjustments related to the audit. Many of these were provided by Michael Ann Geneva and their groups as routine entries as we moved through the audit. The city maintains their books and records on the modified accrual basis of accounting. And the financial statements also require full accrual. So you have modified accrual and full accrual. And a lot of these entries were made to get the financial statements on both bases of accounting. So nothing too significant there, like I mentioned, routine in nature. We did have 10 reclassification adjustments. These are adjustments that we post during the preparation of the financial statements to get them in accordance with GAAP. However, these are not adjustments that RPS or the city has to post in their records. These are just for financial statement purposes only. An example of a reclassification would be long-term debt. So debt that the city has, there is a requirement to show the current portion, which means the amount of principal and interest payments due in the next year. And the city keeps it all in one amount. And so for financial statement purposes, we need to present the current portion or break that out from the long-term portion that will be paid in greater than one year. So that's an entry that we just made to prepare the financial statements. But again, those are not things that the city or RPS would post. Past adjustments, what a past adjustment is, is through the course of our audit work, if we were to identify any misstatements, we are required to bring those to management's attention. Now, again, as I mentioned, the financial statements, the books and records, those are the responsibility of the city and RPS. So all entries, any misstatements that we find or propose, those must be approved by management and posted to the records if they elect to do so. Sometimes there could be minor adjustments that don't impact our opinion and therefore management may elect not to post those entries. But I'm pleased to report that there were no past adjustments during our audit procedures. Now, we're also required to disclose if there was any disagreements with management, consultations with other accountants, or any difficulties performing the audit. I am pleased to report that there were none of those instances. In fact, you know, working with the city, working with Michael Ann Geneva and everybody there, everybody has been just so helpful. And so we sincerely appreciate that. We've been the auditor for the last three years. This was our third year of doing the audit. So things went very, very smooth. And again, we just appreciate the responsiveness by everybody there at the city. We understand that the audit is a very cumbersome process. It does get in the way of day-to-day operations. And so we are an inconvenience that, you know. So we definitely appreciate everybody's assistance to get through the audit. Now, for Raton Service Public Company, same communications here that we talked about on the previous slide for the city, but related to RPS. As you can see here, there were 16 audit adjustments. And as we worked through those audit adjustments, some of those were identified by us and therefore we had to propose them to management and management posted them. And so there were 16 of those entries. We had three reclassification adjustments for Raton Public Service Company. And then we did have one past adjustment for $86,000. This was not material to the financial statement, so it didn't impact our opinion. However, we did note that the amounts for collections and, you know, because payments are collected at various sites and so RPS will collect amounts on behalf of Raton Water Works. Those, there's been, it seemed to be an accumulation of the reconciliation of that amounts due to Raton Water Works. And so we did have one past adjustment. And I know Robin's going to work in fiscal year 25 to get that corrected and reconciled and through the cooperation and working with Raton Water Works. And again, with RPS, this is our third year doing the audit. Robin is amazing, David and everybody there. So we didn't have any disagreements. There were no other consultations with other accountants and no real difficulties performing the audit. So yes, our sincere gratitude to everybody there at RPS. We really, really enjoy working with everybody there. Continuing on with the required communications, we did have some new accounting standards that came into effect for fiscal year 24. And the accounting standard was GASB 100. And that's entitled Accounting Changes and Error Corrections. Basically, what ended up happening is there's been a clarification on any time there's an accounting change or an error in the financial statements and the disclosure related to presenting any of those type of changes. The city didn't have any error corrections. However, there was a reporting entity change, meaning the city has various funds, right? Some funds are larger than others and some are considered, where you break them out separately in the financials, that's called a major fund. And then all of the other smaller ones are considered non-major funds and they all get grouped together and aggregated in total. What happened is the American Rescue Plan, which has been significant in the last couple of years, used to be a major fund for the city. And in 2024, now that all that funding has been expended, it's no longer a major fund and it's now included in non-major funds and it's aggregated with all of the other small funds. Well, typically you would just make that change in the current year and it would be a little bit difficult to tell what funds have changed in major versus non-major classification. This year, there was some presentation. So you can now see the effects of the American Rescue Plan Fund 231 being a major fund last year, but now those changes are reflected in the financial statements and you can now see it getting moved over to the non-major funds. So not a big deal. It's just a standard change to reflect what has changed with the reporting entity of the city and as well as RPS, but RPS only has one fund, so it's not too challenging there, you know. So as I mentioned, there was no impact for RPS, but we did have that one change of funds from going from major to non-major. Now, what were the audit results? I am pleased to report that both RPS and the city received unmodified opinions on their financial statements. So that is a clean opinion. That is the best opinion you can receive on your financial statements. And it states that the balances and footnotes in the financial statements present fairly in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So great job to everybody. That is, you know, not always the case. So, you know, very good job on the city and RPS for the opinion on their financial statements. Now, internal controls, as I mentioned, we are required to, if we identified throughout our audit, if there's any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, we are required to report those all to you. We did have one material weakness related to RPS. And if you recall, it's because of those audit adjustments in those previous slides. We did have quite a few adjustments that impacted cash and cash equivalents, accounts receivable, prepaid expenses, inventory, capital assets, payable liabilities, notes payable, and unearned revenue. So, you know, because corrections had to be done to all of these balances, we did have that finding there for RPS. Significant deficiencies, I'm pleased to report that there were none reported. So on the RPS side or on the city side, there were none reported. And in addition to, so that's it for the internal control portion. As I mentioned, we are, we do test compliance with various state statutes and regulations. There was one finding that is a repeat finding and it basically relates to the leasing of the Lake Dorothy property and the need for an opinion, a legal opinion as to whether or not that needed to go before city ordinance. So that's a repeat finding that's been discussed and that is included in the financial statements. In the prior year, there were, as part of our standards, we are required to follow up on prior year audit findings. So last year, there was a late submission of the federal audit package and that was finding 2023-001. I'm pleased to report that that was resolved this year, as well as there was a late report to OSA 2023-002 in the prior audit. I'm pleased to report that the city and RPS's audits did get in on time this year and so that finding is resolved. And then we did have the repeat finding for the leased property for Lake Dorothy. And then in the prior year, we did have some minor issues with TARA and New Mexico Retirement Healthcare Contributions. We did follow-up test work on that and I'm pleased to report that that was resolved as well. So excellent improvement between 2023 and 2024 across the board. And so, yeah, just a great job by everybody there. As I mentioned, you know, over the last three years, it's been a sincere pleasure working with you all and it's been a great time. We enjoy our time up there in Raton. So again, I can't express my gratitude enough for allowing us the opportunity to be your auditors. And yeah, at this point, my contact information is there, as well as Mr. Josh Trujillo's contact information. Please don't hesitate to reach out, give us a call, shoot us an email if you have any questions, concerns, even if the audit's not going on. You know, we are always available as a resource to you all. So there's our contact information. But basically, that's my presentation. I'll open up the floor for any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Armio? Not seeing any. Thank you for your presentation and thank you for your job.
Awesome. Well, thank you guys so much. I sincerely appreciate it.
All righty, thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. You guys have a great rest of your evening.
Bye.
All righty, item C, deliberate enact on resolution 2025-24, acknowledgment of the fiscal year 24 audit.
Motion to adopt resolution 2025-24, acknowledge of the fiscal year 24 audit.
Motion and second to adopt resolution 2025-24. Yes, do we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
And I would just like to note, since we did vote on the finding with Lake Dorothy, that is their opinion, it's not a legal opinion. And I will argue that to my grave. And we've reached out for opinions and nobody wants to touch it.
So Susan Carey is actually going to formally submit something to the AG's office and we just recently talked about that.
Okay, we'll see what happens. If he rules against me, then I guess I got an early grave. We'll see what happens, but Mr. Armio knows very well how I feel on that. So. Item D, public hearing, debate, deliberate enact on codification ordinance number 1029-13 supplement and ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to ordinance 940. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is codification ordinance 940, adopting a supplement to be published with American Legal Publishing Corporation to update and revise our ordinances 1020 through 1028. This administrative exercise was last done in 2022 to update our webpage. This is a public hearing and the city recommends that you vote in affirmative on this action.
As Mr. Mestes says, this is a public hearing and we will be taking action on this ordinance at this time. Is there any questions or comments? This is standard housekeeping, so. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the codification ordinance. I guess motion to adopt the codification ordinance, number 1029-13 supplement and ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to ordinance 940.
One second.
A motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 1029. Any further discussion? Yes, do we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
Ordinance passes, thank you. Item E, introduction of ordinance, affordable housing ordinance to implement the Colfax County Affordable Housing Plan, which addresses affordable housing in the city, excuse me, of Raton. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is a proposed ordinance to implement the Colfax County Affordable Housing Plan, which addresses affordable housing in the city of Raton. In accordance with New Mexico Constitution, Article 9, Section 14, the Affordable Housing Act, New Mexico Statutes Annotated, 1978, Section 6-27-1, the Act, New Mexico Mortgage Finance Authority Rules. The purpose of this affordable housing ordinance is to, number one, establish procedures to ensure that local housing assistant grantees or qualifying grantees who meet requirements of the Acts and Rules pursuant to the Act, both at the time of the award and through the term of any grant or loan under the program. Number two, to establish an application and award timetable for local housing assistant grants or loans to permit the section of qualifying grantees to the city. Three, in conjunction with MFA, create an evaluation process and performance criteria. Number four, require long-term affordability of the city's affordable housing projects so that the project cannot be sold shortly after completion and taken out of the affordable housing market. Number five, require that a grant or loan for a project must impose a contractual obligation on the qualifying grantee that the affordable housing units in any project be occupied by persons of low or moderate income as defined in this ordinance. Six, provide for adequate security against the loss of public funds or property in the event a qualifying grantee abandons or otherwise fails to complete the project. Seven, requires review and approval of a housing grant project budget by the city or the MFA before any expenditure of grant funds or transfers granted property. Eight, require that a condition of grant or loan approval be proof of compliance with all applicable state and local laws, rules, and ordinances. Nine, provide definitions for low income and moderate income and set out requirements for verification of income levels. Ten, provide the city with a valid affordable housing program. And finally, eleven, require that the city enter into a contract with the qualifying grantee consistent with the act, which the contract shall include remedies and default provisions in the event of the unsatisfactory performance by the qualifying grantee and which all shall be subject to review of the MFA in its discretion. The city recommends that you vote in the affirmative on this action.
All righty, thank you again. This is an introduction of an ordinance to adopt the implementation of Affordable Housing Plan. This is something that I know North Central is involved in in creating projects and buying up houses and making renovations to those houses. Also, I believe it was in the legislation this year. MFA got an additional, I believe it was $110 million, something like that, to go towards this program. So I think it is worth our efforts in that to be involved in this. That's my opinion. Again, this is an introduction and we will take comments from anybody.
I've had a couple of questions, if I may. In terms of who wrote the ordinance, is this a boilerplate or other counties using this? Do we have any, like, information on that?
I believe this is a boilerplate used across the state.
Okay. So, and so other places are using the same ordinance in order to implement these particular programs?
That's my understanding.
And I'm assuming it's not related to the housing authority. This is for particular city projects that are...
Yes.
Okay. I think those are my main questions. Thank you.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
Absolutely.
Is it low-income housing or is it affordable housing? Because those are different things.
It's not low-income housing. It is affordable housing. Any other comments? Again, this is an introduction. We will be taking action at an upcoming meeting. All right.
Do we need a motion? I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, we do need a motion to introduce. Yes, you do. We do. Sorry.
Motion to introduce.
We have a motion and a second to introduce the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that reminder. Item F, introduction of ordinance, an ordinance granting a franchise with certain rights and incident thereto to Resound Networks LLC, a Texas corporation LLC. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is a franchise proposal where the city hereby grants Resound Networks Limited Liability Corporation, a Texas corporation, qualified and authorized to do business in the state of New Mexico subject to the terms, conditions, and limitations contained in this ordinance, permission to rent, use, and occupy rights of way in public places, and a non-exclusive franchise to provide telecommunications service and the right and privilege to erect, construct, maintain, and operate a telecommunications system within the corporate limits of the city that the same now exists or may be extended in the future, and a non-exclusive franchise right and privilege to erect, construct, maintain, and operate poles, wires, fixtures, equipment, underground circuits, and conduits, and other property necessary and convenient for the transmission and distribution of telecommunications services. for the transmission and distribution of telecommunications services to the city and its inhabitants, and to customers and the territory limits beyond the city, and to transmit, distribute, and sell telecommunications services upon, over, along, under, and across the streets, alleys, roads, and other public ways and places, including, but not limited to private property on which a preliminary subdivision plat has been approved by the city for provision of public utilities with the corporate limits of the city as the same now exist or may be extended in the future. If you want a quick translation, this is for Resound Networks to have broadband on the east side and north side of the city, and they are working with RPS for pole agreements and getting this. And hopefully, once we get this done, they will be done within a year wiring that part of the city. And we have two more agreements coming in the future, one for Baca Valley and the other one for Comcast.
All righty. Any other questions, comments? Introduction of an ordinance.
I will move to introduce the ordinance. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Dr. Mestes, does this include, or does Resound have personnel that are going to actually do connections here or is that up to the, includes a copy?
No, Resound will do the connections.
I see. So it's similar to what Baca Valley is doing now? Okay. All right. That's my question.
One question. In item 13, it talks about the franchise fee. Is that something, when would that begin as one, is there a certain project completion that is the marker for that?
Just one second.
Believe it would begin when they start charging customers.
During turning on the service. Okay.
Because it's based on their-
Their gross revenue and it looks like it-
Thereafter, it's 4%.
Three to four to five. So it starts at three and then it's to four and then 5%.
Yeah. As people get fancier and fancier with their broadband.
Hey, I've got, I've finally got it in my house, so I'm happy, Captain.
Oh, man, I cannot wait. I'm excited for everyone to have it.
Yes, and we should have it.
Any other questions, comments? And now we will take a motion.
Now, I will move to introduce the ordinance, granting a franchise with certain rights, incident thereto to Resound Networks LLC, a Texas corporation LLC.
Second. A motion and a second to introduce the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And we'll do it one more time. Introduction of ordinance, an ordinance amending ordinance 1018, water and sewer rates, amending chapter 53.036, water rates in section 53.039, application for water service, raising construction water rates. I'm thinking it's either chapter or charter, but I'm not sure.
Chapter, sorry.
Okay, all right. Again, introduction of an ordinance. We do have Mr. Wakefield here, if there's any questions, or Mr., let's just go ahead.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is an ordinance, amending ordinance 1018, water and sewer rates, amending chapter 53.036, water rates in section 53.09, application for water service, raising construction water rates. The water rates is amended to read as follows. Construction water, A, hydrant or manifold meter, non-potable, fixed per meter, $50 per month, and $12.50 per 10, for, per, I'm sorry, 1,000 gallons. And chapter 53 of the City of Raton Code of Ordnances, section 53.059, application for water services is amended to read as follows. A, hydrant or manifold meter, non-potable, a $900 cash deposit, and $100 fee shall be made with each hydrant or manifold meter owned by the water utility and checked out by authorized contractors. Only utility-owned meters are allowed to be connected to the water utility system. This ordinance is to be reflected in water sewer rates for the meter readings done on July 1st, 2025. The city recommends that you vote in affirmative of this action.
All righty. Again, this is an introduction of the ordinance. Is there any comments, questions?
How many of these are we talking about? What, I mean, in a typical year?
It varies, depending on how much construction is going on. That would include any water that we sell to customers out in, out in the rural areas also. Roughly meters, three to five.
Okay. All right.
Any other comments, questions?
We did discuss this extensively at the Water Board meeting and the rate, from what I understand, hadn't been changed since 1981, and people were wondering why. Even, even some of our contractors perhaps, so it's time.
This is a compromise.
Any other comments, questions?
I will move to approve the ordinance amending, introduce the ordinance of the, ordinance amending ordinance 1018, water and sewer rates, amending chapter 53.036, water rates in section 53.039, application for water service, raising construction water rates.
A motion and a second to introduce the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item H, report, deliberate, and act on property concerning a dangerous building and requiring removal located at 805 North Fourth Street. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, H and I are related. We'll do H first. Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is a copy of resolution 202348, passed by the Commission in July of 2023 regarding the property concerning a dangerous building and a required removal located at 805 North Fourth Street. In the packet is an updated letter from Fire Chief Anthony Burke. The city recommends that you vote in affirmative on this action.
Comments, questions?
I'm just curious what we'd be voting on since we already had the resolution. We vote on, I don't think we can take action on a letter.
I believe that it is with the updated information from the fire chief on the property and that nothing has been done. This is just, I guess, affirmation of the previous ordinance. Now that we have updated information from the fire chief.
I'm kind of in concurrence with Lori.
I don't think we have anything to vote on. There's no document.
I mean, it was already done as 23.
I'm sorry. I just kind of thought that Jaden was going to give a report on it and then-
And then the next item will go-
Yes.
I'm Jaden Welch. I'm the city engineer. I, the reason for this appearing in the agenda is because it is one of the buildings that the city was looking to take action on. And at the time that it was, the resolution was passed that it be a dangerous building, all the Ts weren't crossed and Is weren't dotted, and this is crossing those Ts and dotting those Is by providing the report from the fire chief.
Wouldn't we have to have a new resolution then?
Since it was updated, I think we do.
Well, did the resolution change and you weren't in?
It hasn't changed anything. This is still the previous resolution that I just provided for information purposes.
And we have added the inspection letter from the fire chief.
So we would be voting to add the inspection letter to the file?
Yeah, there's really, we can't vote on the resolution. It's been passed.
Right.
Unless there was an amendment to the resolution.
There was no change to the resolution. This is just filing the chief's report along with the resolution then.
I don't think we need to take any action.
It'd just be part of it, yeah.
Put it in the file.
Good report, good update.
All righty. Aye. I'm guessing since it's the same resolution number, there might be, well, let's, let's go through it here. Deliberate enact on appeal of, on appeal of resolution 202348 concerning a dangerous building and requiring removal located at 805 North Fourth Street by Jeremiah Tre- Jeremiah Trejo. Okay, so this is an appeal actually on the resolution.
Okay. Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is a letter from Mr. Jeremiah Trejo requesting the city hold off on the demolition of property until he can clear the deed that he purchased at a recent delinquent tax sale. At this time, I would like to yield the floor to Mr. Trejo.
Good evening. It's an honor to be in front of the panel tonight. Awesome opportunity. Super grateful for it. It's been very informative, also very inspirational. Your video was incredible. I've really enjoyed the big push of where Raton is going for our community. With some of the programs that are going through town, like Matt, Raton Main Street, super awesome. Like, that's a super good achievement. We've gotten some other good programs that have started up, like the Center for Community Innovation and the Learning Lab that has just opened up for some of our youth that has been an alternative for the educational side. I'm very grateful to be a part of this community. So I just wanted to start off with that introduction. But what I'm actually here for is to appeal the plan to demolish 805 North Fourth Street. I just purchased it through a delinquent sale, and I'm not denying the fact that it needs to be demolished. I completely agree with the property does need to be demolished, but I would like to do it on my financial pocket instead of having a lien place upon the property for it to be demolished. It would cause a lot of hardships if I would like to, which I would like to build another property on top of that. It would make it a lot harder for me to go and get a construction loan or any type of other loan for that property when there is a lien already on that. I was born and raised here in Raton. I have three children here that I have actively involved in the community with this aspect of the real estate ventures. We touched on it a little bit on one of the other acts of affordable housing. I completely agree with the affordable housing here in Raton, and I would like to contribute to that. We don't have enough affordable housing. We don't have enough low-income housing to actually support the actual community members of this community, which does make it difficult. I agree with everything that the city is doing on trying to clean up the city, on demoing a lot of these properties. The only thing I would ask is if my, if this property that I still have not received the deed to can be not added to the list of demolition, and I will demolition it myself. A projected range of before winter starts, so at least in the next six months, I would like to have it demoed on my own personal financial endeavors.
Any questions?
I'd say, Mr. Trejo, I really appreciated your letter. It was very informative. We're so grateful to have you in town, and, and I appreciate the sentiments that you're presenting. I think that's very responsible and, and actually doing a lot of good for the town and potentially could save the city a more headache and yourself more headache. It's, to me, it's kind of a, to me, it's a win.
Commissioner?
I just wanted to, you have a date or a timeframe that you're thinking of? I know you just said it would be for winter.
I don't have an exact date, just because I still haven't received the deed. But as winter comes, I would like to have a dummy for winter because that's when it makes things a lot more difficult. Summertime would be perfect to get this fully completed by September at the latest. Like I said, I still haven't received the deed, so that's kind of what's holding it off at the moment.
When, what was the date? When, when did you purchase this?
I don't have the specific date right in front of me. About a month now.
I think Mayor, they had a, the state had a tax sale posted.
So it was part of that?
Yeah. So, I mean, as the bureaucratic wheels-
Yeah.
Could be a while, but.
They, they said anywhere between four to six weeks. It's roughly around four weeks, so I'm hoping relatively soon I would be able to start that project.
Over another month.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so from, from May to September, I think is a very valid timeframe of be able to, to get it completed on my own.
So by November 1st, you feel like you could have it demolished?
Yes.
Their request of, we are able to give that deadline and-
I don't know if we, do we, I don't think we want to give, do we want to give him a date by tonight or just tell him he's being fair?
I think if it's an appeal and we had kind of a, a resolution already, we might need to give a, a date by- That way it would come back to the commission again at that time if it's not complete, yeah, to be extended or, you know, or moved upon by the city. I think that's, that's what I would think in terms of legality.
I might make a suggestion. Let's just make it December 31st.
December 31st.
That's a good one.
That'll, so it gives you to the end of the year. And I'll, I'll ask one question. You have the financial wherewithal established now to take this endeavor on?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm good with that if everybody else is.
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of in agreement here as well. It kind of takes it off our hands and, and-
Lean, one great project, hopefully, yeah.
Possibly a new building essentially down the road.
I wouldn't, so, how do you want to phrase this?
Yeah, this is a new one to me. I've never appealed, have a resolution appealed.
I think it's not appealing the dangerous building. I think what we are doing is granting, well, withholding demolition and granting basically a staff execution.
Extension, okay.
Yeah.
Postponement.
So do we want to just postpone this until the, the last meeting in December? Or do we want to just postpone the timeline of that?
We, uh-
So.
Approve his appeal.
We need to approve his appeal is what we need to do.
Contingent upon a demolition date of December 31st, 2025.
Yeah.
Approve the appeal.
Sounds good.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the appeal of revolution, oh, resolution 202348 concerning a dangerous building and requiring removal located at 805 North Fourth Street by Jeremiah Trejo until December 31st for the demolition date.
Motion and a second to uphold the appeal. Is there any further discussion? Yes, we better take a roll call on this because this, this is one of those that's kind of quick, kind of tricky.
Sounds good. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacamo?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes. All righty. Good luck.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thanks for doing it, Tom.
Thank you guys. Yeah, I've just, I have my graduation set up with RMMI, which is Rocky Mountain Microfinance Institute, to hopefully be able to bring some more businesses into Raton too. So I'm super grateful to have this opportunity. I think everything happens for a reason, and this was meant to happen to kind of get up here and get involved. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
All righty. Item J, deliberate enact on appeal of vacant building at 1358 Brilliant Avenue by Cynthia Mora. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is an appeal of a vacant building fine against Raymond, Pete, and Paul Mora, all deceased, by Cynthia Mora, widow of Raymond Mora. Is there a representative from the Mora family here? It's not a representative. I was expecting the end of the year. Did we?
I haven't had any contact with her.
What she is appealing is she is representing the estate, and all this is tied up in probate, and she is asking to waive the $300 vacant building fine.
Yeah, the violation says it's a $600 fine. Is that what we're, oh, wait.
Outstanding balance, no. Outstanding balance of 300.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mac?
Mayor and Commissioner, I'm Mac McGary. I'm the code enforcement officer. I spoke to Ms. Mora about this. She came into my office and we talked about it. And basically what she's asking is because there's a change in ownership, her husband was owning the, the property, he deceased, he passed away. So she would like the, she would, she would like the vacant building ordinance to be reset to the first year. So right now, she's in arrears of three years, so it'd be a $600 debt that she has. So she's asking that, that it go back to year one because she's a new owner in this situation and have, she's happy to pay the vacant building fee. She realizes the need for it. However, that's what she's asking for.
And the year one fee is $300.
$100.
It's a good fair request, given the property's in probate. It's hard to work through.
Any other questions or comments?
I know this family, and it was kind of tragic that these, the mother passed and gave it to the three boys. And three boys, their untimely deaths were kind of a surprise to the family. But, so I could see where the probate situation could be a problem here because not knowing how it was will, there could be possibly three probates before this thing has a marketable title to it. So, yeah, I, I think we need to be generous in that money. Backdated.
Yeah, I agree. And I'd be happy to make a motion to grant an appeal to reset the date of the vacant building at 1358 Brilliant Avenue by Cynthia Mora, so that it's year one.
Motion and second to grant the appeal. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, Delivering Act on Raton Lodger's Tax Non-Promo Request from the Raton Arts and Humanities Council. Mr. Rick.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is a request from Brenda Ferry, Executive Director of Raton Arts and Humanities Council, for a request of 1,500 per month for a 25, 26 fiscal year totaling $18,000 to cover operational expenses that are not addressed by grant funding. The city recommends that you vote in the affirmative on this section, but I will ask Ms., talking like you now, Ms. Ferry to come forward if she has any additional comments.
I know Lodger's Tax is down, but I'm trying. We're bringing more people in. I promise. It's going to be a fantastic year. And this just helps us at the Arts Council. And I can say that the grants that I do write cover 65% of our expenses, and that doesn't include the city's portion to that. So, you know, I actively pursue them all the time, and this is kind of, but I feel like quality of life that the Arts Council does bring to Raton is pretty important. So, that's my plea. You know, most of you are season ticket holders anyway. We got to keep it going.
Yes, ma'am.
I really appreciate that you always submit your P and L statements, that they're always, you know, on time. I think you're one of the few organizations, if any, that does that and keeps us informed. I also appreciate how you diversify your income, and you're always looking for other sources besides the city. And I, I very much support this.
I was going to make the same comment. I believe they're the only ones that we get a P and L from of the people that we do support, which is...
Important, yeah.
Probably going to make an impact on the way we do things this year. So I do appreciate, and I would support this as well.
Motion to approve the Raton Lodger's Tax Non-Promo Request from the Raton Arts and Humanities Council.
Well, probably ought to state it.
For the $18,000 total for the year.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question for Ms. Antonucci.
Yes.
Is this affordable? Since you watched the lodger's tax fund?
Mayor and Commissioner, we have talked about the challenges that Lodger's Tax has seen in the prior fiscal year, but I can report, and we'll talk about it here towards the end of the meeting when I give my financial report. We have seen a little bit of a recovery in Lodger's Tax, so I'm pretty confident that going into the next fiscal year, we won't be experiencing the same deficit that we had last year. So I would say that our non-promo fund does have a little bit more money, maybe not as much if we approve the item this evening for the HVAC at the Welcome Center. That is a big chunk of money, but as we've talked, some of the other line items within the non-promo are all building-related maintenance and repairs to all of our tourist-related facilities, which are in desperate need of some repairs and upkeep. So, you know, I echo the mayor and the commission that I appreciate everything that the Arts and Humanities Council does, and I would say that it definitely is part of our quality of life in Raton. So I think we get a lot of bang for our buck. And I do also appreciate the fact that they do provide their financial statements to us.
So you're saying we won't have higher rates or radically improvements?
No, we, we can certainly, and they're not requesting an increase, so this is the same amount that we've funded for multiple years.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? We have a motion and a second. Dezere. I'm, I'm, I'm lost. I'm sorry. Okay. Let's go a roll call since I said Dezere.
Okay. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfeldt?
Yes.
And we've got to go to Z, folks, so hang in there. All right, motion carries. Item L, Delivering Act on Event Form for the Independent Riders' Run for the Wall on May 17th, 2025. Mr. Rick.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is an event form request map and certificate of insurance from the Independent Riders in support of the 2025 Run for the Wall on May 17th, 25, 2025, starting at 8 o'clock on Clayton Highway. The city has hosted this event in the past, and the city recommends that you vote affirmative on this action.
Any comments, questions?
Motion to approve the event form for Independent Riders' Run for the Wall on May 17th, 2025.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You betcha.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had heard that that wasn't happening this year.
Uh, Run and Return was not happening. You're running for the wall.
Okay, all right. Item M, Delivering Act on Proposal from High Tech E and D LLC for the Raton Senior Citizens Center for the Convention Oven Issues. Mr. Nestor.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is a proposal from High Tech E and D LLC to assess the oven issues at the Raton Senior Center. As you are aware, new construction of a hood might be required for the ovens. Makeup air is not being provided for the existing hood over the range and fire to replace the air being sucked out of the room by the existing hood. Without makeup air being intentionally provided at the desired quantity and location, the hood heating systems are likely not as efficient, and makeup air is being pulled through the existing evaporated cooler, when not covered up and winterized, or through other openings and cracks in the building exterior. Usually designated makeup air has its own heater in order to help control kitchen temperature. The purpose of the study is to coordinate research with Vulcan to see if the installation of a downdraft diverter is a possible solution, or if the hood system needs to be specially designed. The cost of this study is $8,438.63 paid from the general fund. Once we have a solution, we will apply from funds from the Mexico Aging and Long-Term Services Department. The city recommends that you vote in the affirmative on this action.
Any questions, comments? I would like to make a comment as being very familiar with this and the system. They produce between 250 and 300 meals a day there, and we're using just a conventional oven right now is putting an extreme burden on that staff in order to get the meals out in time. So I would highly recommend we look into this and get this fixed.
Do we know how long this, the study will take so that we can get this turned around quicker if there's a solution, or?
Um...
Ready to go?
Hold on. 30 days, within 30 days. Any other comments, questions?
I will move to approve the proposal from High Tech E and D LLC for the Raton Senior Citizens Center for the Convention Oven Issues.
Second?
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I would like to request a brief recess. Myself and Ms. Antonucci and the rest of the city staff would like to honor Ms. Dezere Trujillo for completing her certified municipal clerk's certification. So if we could take a quick break, we have pizza, cupcakes, and drinks outside, and so we could do a bathroom break, get some food, and get back to work.
How about, is 15 minutes enough?
Aye.
More than a minute for me.
Okay. Let's resume, well, it's 18, let's resume at 8 o'clock. That's 18 minutes. How's that?
All right.
We have a motion to go to recess until 8 o'clock.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. We are in recess. Thank you.
Congratulations, Dezere.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it is exciting.
We had no doubts.
It's a lot of work.
The, the cupcakes is what swayed it for me.
Ladies and gentlemen, please help yourself with some pizza.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. And then the girls softball team is doing really well, too. Like, I can't test them.
Don, did you not want to get you something? Did you already eat? Kathy probably cooked you something really good. They go there quite a bit, don't they, for their medicals? Yeah, I don't know if you know, my dad's been in the hospital. You should go visit him. He's doing pretty good. He was in Pueblo for three weeks, and now he's out at N C N C. Do therapy. Yeah, so Ted Camp is working with him. Lindy is working with him also. But he's, yeah, he's doing pretty good, though. We're gonna have a meeting in the morning with the doctors and see what the plan is. So he's kind of hoping it gets to go home soon. But he's got a pacemaker. And now he has to go in like a few weeks for a valve procedure. I don't think that would be a big deal. But I think once he gets that done, he'll be feeling a lot better. I don't know. He never dreamed he'd be going through something like that. I know, what are you gonna do? I mean. Yeah, yeah, please do. Maybe he'll get out and you can visit with him outside the hospital. You guys have your opening ceremonies three weeks ago.
Did you get you some goodies, Don?
Take it home, baby.
That's a smart move. I know, I don't do sweets, and I thought, I should take my daughter a cupcake, though. She'll like that.
So we'll be making them up the next Friday. My dad had been in the hospital in Pueblo, so I wasn't here the last time he was here. But one Saturday, I came over and there was snow down, and the roads were just terrible. So I was going to make my kids, unless I was your opening ceremony. It's always great weather, yeah. And then there was like high school kids were playing one night, and it was real windy. I felt so bad for them.
I know. Jesus said I looked like I was buffering, and I go, I'm so sorry, guys, about you. I couldn't put it in. Because I go, did you sing your phrase? And you're like, well, you want to give a piece on this one? I'm sure. Because I thought Jason was gonna go over the report and recommend for us not to do it. So then I was like.
I thought Jason was gonna give a tune. Jason said, I'm giving you a song.
Oh, I was like, I totally froze when he asked me. I was like.
Yeah, sometimes when he calls on us, we're just kind of expecting it. Somebody acknowledged.
Yeah, that was nice. I mean, I didn't expect it.
Well, that was kind of the original plan. Like, whoa.
Yeah, and then it was such a long night that I thought. It's cool. At least it was like a little bit of a break where we got to get up, because it was a long meeting.
I didn't look at the agenda till I pulled over the parking lot.
Where am I at? I know, and then it was so hard to try and put like people at the top just because of all the introductions and ordinances. And so it's like, normally when we would stick you up there, we had to do those ones, and it was so hard. And then everyone had to go.
Even the auditor was calling me because he kept saying, I'm muted, I can't hear. But just let me know when it's my turn.
Yeah.
But it took a long time.
It did, it took a long time.
I thought you thought we were having technical difficulties.
You're like, no, it's just not there yet.
I'm a little unhappy to do all this. I have to nicely start a nonprofit, so. That was like my worst time of the year when I went to a fire. Luckily, we had a really great relationship. We've known each other for twenty years, and we get each other very well. They knew all of our policies. The max that we could do is eight. And for the last few years, we've had the same one. We have an R F P D out right now, so like every three years, we re-. So I don't know, we'll see. Is that a state or federal law that you have to get to every year? Or just a state, state auditors and stuff? It's getting harder and harder all the time because a lot of these small firms have been bought out. For my counter.
She can't say I forgot her name.
So we'll have the same one of the firm that was nice for them. We'll see, I hope we get some. Ours have always been in. One year, we had one that happened. They have to go through like a peer review process from the state auditor and related publishing, like a group listing. Whoever. And ours is complicated because of the utilities.
That's for sure. How much time do we got, Des?
There. And twenty-five million. Carlos Springs, his family's from around. My husband grew up. Maybe we're two years. Oh, he talks about programs when he was a kid. When he went to Cal State School. Yeah. Um, it's small for Iowa, but not compared to your. Uh, twenty-four thousand people. And I was. We lived in, um, Colorado Springs for sixteen years. And then moved up to Cody, Wyoming, which is about ten thousand people. And I'm there for a little. Passed away when we were up there. I would be back to almost probably ten or eleven days. I've been working cross country for a while. I stay here, but. It's fairly large, just because the population's kind of transient. Your round population's maybe like forty thousand.
Sorry, we're making you guys wait even more.
Activity down there a little.
Don, can I get you like fizzy water or anything? Not a cupcake, nothing? What?
The nice thing is, um, New Mexico chains are. You order on Amazon, the city gets there. Yeah, how many people are doing that?
Oh, you do, wow.
Oh, really? Saying you purchased her fans on. Oh, my gosh. Yes, they make sure. Yeah, I don't know what it is. Oh, my God.
Because that's why she liked it and all she needed.
Come, hurry up, Don. Let's go. I'm ready to go home.
Wow, we're like forty-five seconds.
See, Desiree again. Desiree extends our meeting again. First she puts this clear to Z.
If you wanted to send me home on a paid leave of absence.
Not happening.
Herein. Then I would pay a leave of absence. I would have a nice Airbnb for that, yes. I would totally understand.
Thank you for doing that.
All right, I'd like to call this meeting back to order. We are moving on to action item N, deliberate and act on lodger's tax advisory board recommendations for Raton Little League by Hillary Pasquale and renewal of billboard contracts with Lamar and Linmark. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, we will read and vote on these separately. In your package, the lodger's tax advisory board is submitting recommendations to the city commission that three thousand dollars be awarded to Raton Little League for the All-Star Tournament for joshing bags and for cooling towels, fifteen hundred contingency fund, and fifteen hundred from the annual events form.
Hey, would you like to make any comments? All righty. All right.
So we're excited to host All-Stars again here in Raton this year for Little League. So June thirteenth through the sixteenth will be our softball All-Stars. And then June twentieth through the twenty-seventh will be baseball All-Stars. We're expecting about five hundred and fifty players last year. We budgeted for five hundred last year and had about five hundred and fifty. So we bought some more bags out of our own funds last year. So planning ahead this year, about five hundred and fifty players, about expecting twenty-five hundred people during those two weeks to be here in Raton. So again, gonna do the visitors' guides and the backpacks and get some coupons and stuff from the downtown stores to get people out in Raton while they're here.
Cool.
Yep.
I attended the opening ceremonies a couple Saturdays ago. Was awesome.
Yes.
Weather cooperated, beautiful. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, ma- Mr. Mayor, the city recommends that you vote in the affirmative on this action.
I'm just really excited that you all were able to get this again, and it's such a wonderful thing for our town. And, and thank you for all the energy and volunteerism that you all do.
It's not a small thing. It is not, yeah.
Any other comments?
Motion to approve the Raton Little League request of three thousand dollars for lodger's tax.
Motion a second to approve. Is any further discussion? All in favor, vote by a sign of a aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Renewal of billboard contracts with Lamar and Linmark. Mr. Mestes.
So the lodger's tax advisory board is submitting a recommendation to the city commission that regarding four billboard contracts will be expiring in July. Due to a budget shortfall, the lodger's taxes advisory board is recommending to the city commission to renew the billboard contract with Lamar billboards for Dumas, Texas billboard, and with Linmark billboards, the Raton, New Mexico, Clayne Highway billboard, and not to renew the contract with Lamar billboards for the Dalhart, Texas billboard, or Linmark billboards for the Raton, New Mexico, Armex Building billboard. And this is out of the billboard fund, and the city recommends that you vote in affirmative on this action.
So we're cutting down by two billboards?
Yes, sir.
Questions, comments?
Questions, so it looks like the other contracts won't be up until twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven. And do we feel like this is sufficient for the, some of the lodger's tax divisions? This year, I know that was, one of our strategies was to cut some billboards.
Mayor and Commissioner, on your handout in your packet, if we were to eliminate four, that's about a twenty-five thousand dollar a year savings. But if we keep two of the four, we would realize about a thirteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollar a year savings. And then, yeah, the next billboard that would be up for renewal would be next year in May, end of April. Uh, that's the Capulon billboard. And then, yeah, you're correct in saying that the rest of them run through twenty-twenty-seven. We may revisit this again next year with the Capulon billboard.
I oppose on you. So how many billboards total do we have presently? And where are they?
So we have nine billboards, so you should have this handout in your packet. Did you have that? Sorry.
I can't film that far back.
We didn't include the photos of all the billboards, but we did give you the spreadsheet of all of our active billboard listing.
It should be this, the paper clipped one. In the pocket, so there's another.
And so we have some with Lamar and some with Linmark.
So does the lodger's group feel like we get to pay for a block out of the four that are listed here?
They felt that the two that they're suggesting to renew were the better locations.
So the one that's on the Clayton Highway, it's actually kind of sits right in Frank Ferry's front yard. We're kind of using that as a welcome to Raton billboard in the absence of a monument sign. So I think that's why that one was desirable to the board. And then I think there was some discussion with the Dalhart, like Dumas, you've got several different directions you could be going when you see the board. But is that what they said?
They felt it was a better location and that, um, the other location, they felt that they already were coming this direction, so it kind of defeated the purpose.
Now, I will say that the Texas billboards historically, years ago, we let those go, and they were difficult to get back. But, um, you know, they are the more expensive ones as well, if you look at the, the listing there. But, um, you know, we've typically tried to draw from the Texas market. But you'll recall that during COVID, we had a lot of money that wasn't being spent on events. And so we really needed to spend the funds because we can only carry them over for two years. So we did enter into, you know, more billboard contracts than we had previously had during that period because we had, you know, a lot of funds available, but that's not really the case now. So I think we need to scale back a bit and kind of cut this budget as much as possible.
I guess that's what I'm trying to get into. I, I don't know how effective billboards are when they've gone competing against smartphones. I guess the point I'm kind of drawing to is maybe cut this a little harder. Ditch the three billboards and just keep the one that's just outside of Raton. Eliminate the one in Dalhart as well as the one in Dumas.
And I think the discussion on the Armex building is that one's really kind of hard to see as you come around that curve and you're going seventy miles an hour. So they, and that's a more expensive one as well. All of them are illuminated with the exception of the, the little one that we have south of town. But, um, yeah, from a visibility standpoint, I think the Armex one is a little hard to see. And I think we typically had used that one to kind of try to market, you know, come to downtown. But I don't know how effective that's been in the past.
You know, I don't have any real statistics right now, but, um, I, I think they are still showing that billboards can be effective to some degree. Yeah, I'm not sure we need all of these myself either, but.
And I think there's been some discussion, maybe Lori's been involved in some of the discussions, that the city might potentially be able to put some billboards on some of our own city-owned property. I don't know the rules and regulations of that, or if the DOT allows that. But we've also talked about maybe digital billboards.
I tend to agree with Commissioner Honeyfield that we could, if, if, if money is at all tight and we're trying to get some money back in our fund and refund that, I would be okay with getting rid of Dumas as well as Dalhart in addition to the Armex one. Just in the idea that we have a lot of local people trying to do events that I think actually bring people to town, that we know we're getting that feedback. I think billboards are really good for impressions and branding, and there's a couple of them, you know, that I think are really effective, but I would be okay with also eliminating Dumas.
Yeah, being down at the visitor's center, I know people do comment on the one at Capulon.
Right.
They see that one, and that's why they look for the visitor's center. Because it.
mentions a visitor's center on it.
That one's a good one.
I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be wise to keep one or the other, Dumas or Dalhart?
I don't know, I'm kind of like...
I don't know which one.
Well, they, they had a discussion, they recommended we get rid of Dalhart because it's a, right, not as advantageous billboard, but I'd be okay with getting rid of Dumas as well, so.
Dumas, you've got the crossroads where you can go north into Colorado that way, or turn and come west. There's a lot of truck traffic going north.
Yeah, I would hate to give up everything in Texas.
Yeah, I would too.
Yeah, I, I'm kind of in favor of keeping the Dumas myself, but I could definitely get rid of the Armex and Dalhart.
That's kind of the way I'm leaning too, is keep Clayton and Dumas.
Well, Clayton's not up though.
Yeah, Clayton Highway is the one.
Oh, but...
It's the least one that, this one is up.
Okay, okay, all right, everyone.
I mean, Clayton Highway.
Well, and that's what I'm kind of looking at is, Dumas and Dalhart are kind of redundant because they're going to get hit with a sign at Clayton and one at Capulon, but to me, I think most folks, like I said, they travel with their little person, it's a business of walking, not something along the side of the road.
Well, that's what I was referring to, I mean, I don't have the statistics, but I think there still is kind of research out there that regular billboards can still be effective, just not, you know, we don't need the same number.
And so in your packet, we did ask Lamar to provide us a copy of the new contract. You'll see that the prices will go up. It would be $575 upon renewal. And then with the Linmark, they just provided us an email, but once we approve the Clayton Highway one, they'll send me the contract for that, so...
Does this include new vinyl, or is that additional?
Let's see. So the Linmark says we can renew for another three years to lock in the rates and then print you free vinyls, so that typically is with the longer contract term. And then Lamar actually quoted us $720 for the vinyl.
That's a one-time charge, right?
Yes. And so are we agreeing to a three-year or a one-year contract on these?
You can choose, I mean, I think that the pricing was reflective of, at least Linmark's was reflective of a three-year, I believe.
The Clayton Highway one would be one we would want to keep, I would think, for three years, so.
Are we just approving the four that you have highlighted, or the four, both?
Those were the four that I was recommending to the board to consider because they were expiring in July of 2025. So my spreadsheet was just to say, hey, this is what we've got, four billboards all expiring in July. If you were to eliminate all four, it would be a savings of almost $25,000 a year. So that was really the discussion of the lodger's tax board, and then they came back with the recommendation to eliminate the Dalhart and the Armex building.
I don't know, my personal opinion, I'd almost say we eliminate three and just keep the Clayton Highway billboard in this proposal.
And so the Lamar is a three-year as well. The first year is at $575 a month, and then you'll see the years two and three jump to 600.
And the Linmark stays at... 437.75 is what it's jumping to?
Yes, 437.75.
It'll lock in that rate, it doesn't increase, so that, so the Linmark one is the Clayton Highway one, and it's, if we go for three years, it'll lock in at 437.75 and have a free vinyl. I think that's a no-brainer. I could go either way on the other one, so.
Pleasure of the board, Ms.
No, next year, no, I take that back. So yeah, Capulon is the only one next year, and I agree that that one is actually the one that the Chamber of Commerce had for many years, and then when they disbanded, the city took over that billboard. It's kind of a nice location because the traffic slows down to go through Capulon, so it's, it's very visible. Once the interstate bypasses, I don't know, you know, there's several here on this list that things will probably change.
Leave me all my time.
Yeah.
Would it be okay to approve them separately, so we can vote separately on those? Because they're different contracts.
Yeah.
It's the pleasure of the board. I, I was just confused. I thought we were just doing, approving two boards. We're eliminating two and approving two. I didn't know we were voting on all of them, so that's where I was confused.
So I would make a motion for the Linmark billboard to approve the Clayton Highway only with the free vinyl for the three-year locked-in rate of 437 and change.
Not the Capulon?
I'm just going to do them separately that way, because I...
Because it's these four that's actually up for renewal in July.
Yeah, and so we're bringing them to you because typically we try to renew 60 days prior to expiration. So if we get into like late May and they haven't heard from us, then they could sell them out from under us technically.
The recommendation from the lodger's taxes is a good recommendation, and that's, you know, to renew, renew the one in Dumas and...
My reason for my motion is just that they're separate, like, one of them we might renew for one year, and one of, this one's a three-year with a free vinyl at a certain rate, so I'm just doing that one first.
Okay.
And then we can decide, whatever the will is on the Lamar billboards is a separate vote, I would think, because it's a separate contract, we could just do it for a year, there's options there.
I guess the only other question I had, is it up to us, or what organization provides the information that goes on that billboard?
The design, I believe, Patricia.
So Patricia Duran is our contracted media manager for the city, and that's funded through lodger's tax as well. So she does all of the designs. Some of the newer designs also had to be approved by New Mexico True because they do have the New Mexico True branding on them, so there's a process for that as well. But, yeah, Patricia Duran works directly with their art department.
Because I guess my opinion is, to, like the mayor's point, it sells the fact that the visitor's center is here, the one in Capulon. The others are just generic things with the name on it, and it's like, big whoop. You know, they need to be selling amenities, the state park, or NRA, or available entertainment venues, this type of thing, not just powders or name.
Have you ever been to Walz, South Dakota?
My wife doesn't let me get out of town.
Here's my, this is why I'm having a problem here. The recommendation is only for the four billboards that are expiring this year.
Right, so it's not...
The other ones, the other ones are expiring next year, correct?
Right, yeah.
So those shouldn't even be up for issue tonight.
No, no, we're just talking about, or I'm just talking about the four that's here.
The only four we're talking about are Dumas, Dalhart, and then Armex and Clayton.
Okay, well, we were talking about Capulon there for a minute.
I guess if my motion doesn't get seconded, then we're...
I'll second it, since you're taking it.
Sure.
Yeah, we have a motion in second to approve the contract for the Clayton Highway billboard.
The Linmark billboard.
The Linmark, Clayton Highway for three years. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of a "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I would entertain motion on any of the other three remaining. I would make a motion that we do not renew any of the other three remaining.
I'll second that.
Any, any questions?
So, no Lamar, basically.
No Lamar.
I think we might miss the one on Dumas, I think we might notice. I could be wrong.
We've asked for, if you can get numbers on, you, on, on the, anyway, I can't.
I think the only thing we could come up with, Patricia said the only way you could track it is if you created a special email address, and then you would know that they were accessing that email because of the billboard, so. So, yeah, collecting any sort of data off of the billboard is difficult.
We do have a motion, we do have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of discontinuing those three billboards? Vote in the sign of a "aye."
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We have one, uh, one, one "aye." Okay, I think we can put the billboards to rest now.
And at some point, if you desire, we can reach out to them to see what Texas billboards are available next year.
It was confusing.
It was. Item O, deliberate an act on planning and zoning commission recommendations. We got a request for subdivision at 1001 Sneed Street and a request for subdivision at 20208 Canyon Drive. Mr. Rick.
Mayor Commission, I would like to actually go Canyon Drive first because the second one is related to item P. So the second split is the property located at 20208 Canyon Drive, that's right up here, that's on behalf of the state of Richard Culpe. The property is the old gas station warehouse at the corner of Nevada and Canyon. You all remember the old Texaco Station? And the city recommends that you vote affirmative on that action.
Questions, comments?
Just, from, we discussed this before, we discussed utilities, can you just, someone remind me, and, Commissioner Honeyfield might remember, but everything was adequate for each lot to have utilities?
Utilities to both locations, yes.
Thank you.
With the caveat that there be an easement granted to service water to the warehouse on, to the north, so an easement was included in the final plan?
That's what's highlighted in yellow, I assume?
I believe so. One on the left side.
Yep.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the request for subdivision of 20208 Canyon Drive.
Motion in second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of a "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hey, the next item there is, do you want to combine that with P, or do you want to separate this here?
I think we should separate because one is a, well, one is the recommendation from planning and zoning, and the second one is a resolution about the vacation of the property. So...
Did we do 1001 Sneed?
That's what we're doing now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because that one's related to this one. Yes. So the Planning and Zoning Commission approves a subdivision split at 1001 Sneed Road and adjoined both sides of Demerit Street and Zahires Road. This will impact item P on the agenda. So if you look at your map, you see there is Zahires Road on the north and Demerit Street on the east. Neither of those exist. And so what we would be doing is giving that property back to the property owner, and there would be, you know, we would be giving up any future expansion in there or need to put in a road, but all that would go back to the property owner.
It's Sancho's property.
Yeah, Sancho's, that property is. And that's up by the golf course, and it goes smack up against the hill there, so...
Jayden, there are no utilities?
That's correct.
There's no road, no utilities, no, nothing.
Motion to approve the request for subdivision at 1001 Sneed Street?
Second.
Motion in second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of a "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? All righty. Item P, deliberate an act on resolution 202526, approving the vacation of property on Demerit Street unimproved and Zahires Road unimproved.
So Mayor Commission, this ties into what you just approved. Now we're vacating the property altogether.
Yeah, we did something similar to this with Butch McGowan's house. What avenue was that? I can't remember, 14th, ran right smack through the, his house. We vacated it, and the house was already there.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 202526, approving the vacation of property on Demerit Street unimproved and Zahires Road unimproved.
Second. Motion in second to adopt resolution 2526. Further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of a "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item Q, deliberate an act on resolution 202525, adopting the Colfax County 2025 Hazard Mitigation Action Plan, and I'm guessing that's why Thomas is here.
Okay, real quick. Mayor Commission, you have been emailed the Colfax County Hazard Mitigation Plan. I don't know if you've all seen it, but it's about three inches thick. Hazard mitigation activities are an investment in the community's safety and sustainability. It is widely accepted that the most effective hazard mitigation measures are implemented at the local government level where decisions on the regulation and control of development are ultimately made. Comprehensive review of a review mitigation plan addresses vulnerabilities to hazard that exist today and in the foreseeable future. Therefore, it is essential that a plan identify projected patterns of how future development will increase or decrease the community's over-hazard vulnerability, and I'll let you explain the scope and the purpose.
Thank you, everyone. Tom B. Hill, Colfax County Emergency Management. So to give the backstory, the county plan expired years back. We've been delinquent in renewing the plan. City of Angel Fire also had an expired plan. Your plan expired, I believe, in October of '24. It was very recently that your plan expired. So all this culminated, and the discussion we had is if we came up with a multi-jurisdictional plan, instead of each of the municipalities being blanketed under Colfax County, now it's multi-jurisdictional, this is your plan. This is City of Raton's plan, as well as it's our plan, as well as it's Maxwell's plan, Springer's plan, et cetera. So that's the way we approach this. Hazard mitigation plan does several things. One, it identifies potential hazards facing a community. Then it identifies potential mitigation efforts in order to address those hazards before they become real life. I know the city submitted multiple potential projects. It's a five-year plan. I believe some of yours involved flood control, storm runoff, uh, fire stations improvement, communications improvement, and then dams. And what I do want to cover really quickly is, so if you've heard, there's some new money coming from Bureau of Reclamation for improvement of dams, especially bringing up engineering standards to modern spec for a lot of these much, much older dams, which includes our famous one right up here. That money is so new, no one really understood the program and the requirements. However, we included a dam failure in our plan revision with that in mind. It got initially approved by the feds back in October, November, sent to the state. The state actually refused it and sent it back to us because the state didn't have matching legislation for the new verbiage for dam failures. So in order to get this thing approved and not wait on the... So, in order to get this thing approved and not wait on the state, we pulled out part of that section for dam failures. We do have a dam failure section in there, but it's not current to the standard of the Bureau of Reclamation money. The state did introduce that legislation in this last session to update their language. It's been approved. Last I heard, it's been signed, however, it doesn't take effect until July 1st. And so, we went ahead, we submitted this plan, everyone agrees it's a good plan. Once July 1st comes about, we're going to re submit an addendum to the plan, updating that dam failure section. So, that way it meets the current federal standard. And so, that's, that's going to be the big thing coming up after this. However, this is a ready plan. It's been approved already by the county commission this morning. Eagle Nest approved it last week. I believe it's on the agenda next week for Springer and Cimarron, and then in two weeks in Angel Fire. I haven't heard from Maxwell yet, but I'm sure they're going to work on it as well. But I'll stand for any questions you have regarding the plan or the development.
Questions, comments?
So, this will come back to us in July for the addendum approval as well, is that what we're anticipating?
Yes, the addendum approval, probably I'm expecting it to be submitted and approved and back to us probably by Octoberish.
Mayor, didn't we have the, wasn't there an engineer's report on the dam within the last couple of years?
We just had one, yeah. I'm sure that, they were part of the planning.
They weren't looking at the results yet?
Yes. We're waiting on the, I think we were, we're waiting on the state to approve it, send it back, accept and send it back, yeah.
It is important to know for hazard mitigation plans, what they really do is, one, they open up funding sources for mitigation efforts, but also they open up the category C through G disaster relief fund. So, under a normal disaster, the A and B funds are available to everyone. And that's build back stuff the way it was. The problem is, if you remember, what, a dozen years ago, we had all the bridges wiped out along the Canadian? Those are old World War II tank bridges that we decked over. That's not a modern engineering standard. So, we lost those bridges. We approached FEMA, FEMA said, that's not a current engineered standard, you can't build that bridge the same, the way it was. And the A and B funds don't allow you to build back something nicer. But having a hazard mitigation plan opens up those other categories where you can actually build something that's nicer than whatever got torn out.
I was working for Berry Engineering at that time and, yeah, we could not make it, make it work.
San Miguel County has been expressing that frustration.
The fun part is that we had the cost estimate of about $250,000 to replace those bridges back then. And we probably spent about $120,000 bringing FEMA out and running off multiple copies of all the disaster estimates for them to tell us, no, we're not going to do it.
One other question, though, so BLM and Federal Stream Commission, are these things regarding Malaya?
Yes. And so, there's actually a pendulum that it, excuse me, an appendum at the back of the hazard mitigation plan that lists all the available, both federal and state entities, and the grant opportunities that are basically open with a approved hazard mitigation plan.
Like I was telling Commissioner Hinefield on our break, the legislation approved $110 million to Water Trust fund this legisla, and then got another additional $100 million. So, there's a $210 million, $210 million dollar fund available for projects, water projects.
As we were saying, this is the time.
This is the time to tap in.
Those are being coordinated through New Mexico Dam Safety. And they have a certain highlight on our county since we have 33 regulated dams with 25 of them, the SADAS critical dams.
It was smart to do the multi-jurisdictional plan. That really is good for a county like ours to, just so we're on the same page and work together, but also to save, you know, the planning and, and to, you know, keep that updated every five years, whatever.
Exactly, it saves money and it, it improves our communication. We all know that we're, you know, two days away from Santa, Santa Fe when they want to come help. So, it's better when we're on our own, we take care of each other.
Any other comments, questions?
Make a motion to adopt resolution 2025-25, adopting the Colfax County 2025 Hazard Mitigation Action Plan.
Okay, we have motion and second to adopt resolution 2025-25. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, folks, have a great night.
Thanks for hanging with us. Item Q, deliberate and act on resolution, no, that was that one, sorry.
And R and S.
R and S are kaput. So, we're going to T, deliberate and act on estimate for the heating and cooling systems at the tourist information center from Mozark LLC utilizing the state price agreement 30000002300084.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is an estimate from Mozark Limited Liability Corporation utilizing state price agreement for complete installation and operational testing of three systems, refrigerators, and your supply air filter for each system at the visitor's center. The city recommends that you vote in affirmative on this action.
And as a resident in that building, I would recommend that.
And this is non-promo funds?
Oh, yes. Sorry, I should have put that in.
Any questions, comments?
I will move to approve the estimate for the heating and cooling system for the tourist information center from Mozark LLC utilizing state price agreement. With six numbers. Second.
A motion and second, and I will also point out the note that this is a not-to-exceed cost, so. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item V, deliberate and act on recommendation of award for demolition contract for the property located at 801 North Fourth Street. Mr. Rick.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a letter from city engineer Jayden Welch. In March, city staff initially obtained a bid from Greycor Environmental through a pre-negotiating CES contract in a bid totaling $22,900 excluding New Mexico GRT, which included hazardous materials abatement. Based on competitive pricing, this bid was presented to the commission for approval. At the regular commission meeting held on March 25th, 2024, the commission adopted to postpone the award decision and direct staff to seek competitive bids from local contractors in an effort to ensure transparency and promote local economic involvement. Pursuant to the commission's directive, city staff reached out to five local contractors to submit proposals for the demolition work. All submitted bids were excluded the cost of hazardous materials abatement, which is being procured separately. The base bids received ranged from $15,750 to $24,075. After thorough review and analysis of the proposals, SL Hayden Construction was identified as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, offering a base bid of $15,750. The city recommends that you award the demolition contract for 801 North Fourth Street to SL Hayden Construction.
Comments, questions?
Is that inclusive or exclusive of GRT?
Good question, that is exclusive. Any other questions? I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the award for demolition contract for the property located at 801 North Fourth Street to SL Hayden Construction for $15,750 plus NMGRT.
Motion and second to approve, with the inclusion of NMGRT. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item W, deliberate and act on recommendation of award for the Climax Canyon Old Pass Trail System Development Project.
Mayor and Commission, qualification-based proposals were received and opened on Monday, March 31st, 2025 for the above referenced RFP. Seven proposals were received. An evaluation committee consisting of public works director Jason Phillips, mayor pro term Laurie Chatterley, and recreation director J.R. Alderetti evaluated the proposals. Attached is a copy of the final rankings matrix. The evaluation committee selected Chinook Architecture as the highest ranking firm with 132 points awarded out of possible 140 points. The city recommends that you contract the requested services to the most qualified firm Chinook Architecture.
Questions, comments?
We had some really great proposals, it was hard, it, it was hard. And so, I told Jason to keep, keep other names around because there's some cool plans out there, so. But I, we really thought that Chinook was the best fit for this particular project, being kind of a nature trail and needing, like, that certain finesse in there, so.
And this is the trail grant money, right?
So, this is, we're using that National Park Service Technical Assistance Grant, but we don't have a grant, well, we have the Trails Plus money, yeah, that we are matching. I got my, all my grants, too many grants. So, yes, there's Trails Plus grant money for this.
Do we have a dollar amount?
This is just the, as far as I know, the, their services, and then we look at the next step, the dollar amount. Jason's also here.
Yes, you want to speak to this a little bit?
Uh, yes. The proposal that you have in front of you is a qualification-based proposal, so there isn't a price component yet. Between Trails Plus money and our matching funds, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of $92,000 that'll be used for design and/or design build for the project. But we do not have pricing at this point.
So, this is just picking who we?
It is. And we had seven firms. I'd say at least five of them extremely qualified firms, and it was tough choices, but this seemed like a really solid choice for this certain project. I think if we were, you know, in an urban setting, there were two firms that would have been better. If we were doing a trail, you know, and it's agreed, it may have been different, but for this type of setup, it looked like the best firm to me.
All righty.
They, they haven't determined that yet. They'll have public stakeholder meetings and stuff. I mean, right now, we have just the basic Climax Canyon Trail. They'll evaluate it and its road potential, and then give it the public look at additional trails, including maybe up to Skyline. But it is parts of the Old Pass and Climax Canyon that'll be, you know, proposed development on. But they, until they go through that public process, we won't really identify where we're going in.
I guess that's kind of my concern is, in this evaluation, if there wasn't a, I don't even know, a schedule or something, I mean.
Qualifications-based proposals of this type by statute do not include price.
Other than the, the grant amounts are public information, so, I mean, they can plug it in for the.
Yes, absolutely, and we couldn't.
Nice idea, I'm moving into building. I guess is what I'm getting at.
Possible, I mean, we, we have the power of, I mean, if, if we don't like proposal number one and we don't come to an agreement, we throw firm A out and go to firm B. I mean, we, we have still.
We expend the funds for firm A's.
No, we can, the next step, they'll give us the out, all the financial information. So, the first step by statute, like you're saying, is you just get the firm.
What we're saying tonight is this firm is qualified to do the job.
And we'll come back with a task order, a series of task orders to, you know, do what we basically told them to, stakeholder engagement. That, I mean, I would anticipate with the $90,000 that there should be some money that'll carry over into a construction project. And we've got kind of assurances from Trails Plus that as long as their money, funding stays available, they want this planned first. But, you know, this was basically the pivot from the stinky tunnel project. So, it's, you know, it's due to be expended by the end of the year because the grant expires, but we, we do still have control over the costs in this thing.
All right, any other questions?
Motion to approve the award for Climax Canyon Old Pass Trail System Development Project to Chinook Architecture.
I have motion and second to award to Chinook. Any additional comments? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item X, deliberate and act on proposal from Code Three Services LLC for the purchase of P25 Digital Radio System and Dispatch Consoles for the Rattone Police Department utilizing state price agreement number 10000002000048. Mr. Rick.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a proposal from Code Three Services Limited Liability Corporation for the purchase of P25 Digital Radio System and Dispatch Consoles for the Rattone Police Department utilizing state price agreement. This will be funded by the State of New Mexico Emergency Capital Outlay. The city recommends that you vote in affirmative on this action.
Yes, this was a last minute addition from the governor's staff. I think the total amount they gave us was 250, so. We're well beyond the years of what we're using right now, so. And plus, this, I understand, this eliminates anybody being able to listen on, in on one's phone lines.
Can the chief's comfortable with the company and the equipment being?
He put it all together.
Oh, okay.
The chief, this is the chief's recommendation.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from Code Three Services for the purchase of P25 Digital Radio System and Dispatch Consoles.
Motion and second to approve, is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item Y, public hearing and discussion fiscal year '26 interim budget.
Mayor and Commission, I yield the floor to Rattone City Chief of Staff, Ms. Michael Ann Antonucci.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. This would be the first of probably two public hearings that will hold between now and the approval of the interim budget, which will be at the second meeting of May. We've currently distributed the budget worksheets to department heads, and those are due back to me by tomorrow. So, that kind of gives us our starting point for a good working draft. I've asked each department head to kind of put together what their capital needs are. That's, aside from, excuse me, salaries, which make up probably 70 to 75% of our budget, that doesn't leave much available for capital purchases for equipment. Excuse me. So, that's where we'll start. I am talking with the city manager currently. We didn't prepare anything for a discussion at tonight's meeting, but we are going to analyze all of the union contracts and incorporate all of those negotiated raises. Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. Into the draft budget. And then we'll also kind of play with the numbers a bit as far as what we will bring back to you for a potential proposed increase for non-union staff. So, I know I missed the last couple of meetings and I apologize for that, but I don't know if we want to discuss a potential date, maybe for a budget workshop?
I was just going to suggest that I think we ought to think about a budget workshop and come to a date and, and do that, yes. I can survey the commission and come up with. Yep. Call the commission and find that.
Yeah, so, I'm hoping that once I gather all of the information from the department heads. I think a big part of our budget is just trying to factor in all of the various grants. We do know that we were probably awarded some capital outlay this year, but typically, we don't put that into the interim budget until we've received some sort of a formal grant agreement. And so, this early in the process, we're kind of still waiting to find out if we've been awarded funds from a lot of the grants. I know that we've applied for LEPF, and then the fire chief was actually working on his application to submit for fire protection funds. So, we usually just kind of work off of some limited information, maybe using some historical data. data. We'll kind of evaluate gross receipts. Have not heard anything on increases to health insurance, but I'm pretty sure just based on some reports I've heard, like from the school board and some other governmental entities, the premiums have gone up. So I do have a quote from New Mexico South Insurers Fund, and so it does look like property rates have gone up as well. So, you know, just kind of trying to pull all of that together, and then we kind of get the red pin out after that and try to refine it so that we could submit a balanced budget. We'll also kind of look at our general fund cash reserves. I know historically in the past, the commission has kind of allocated a certain amount of funding, potentially for abatement. I think a lot of the items that were on our agenda tonight were to abate a lot of these overlooked properties, so we'll talk about that at the budget workshop if you're looking to allocate additional funds for that in the next fiscal year.
As Michael Ann said, this is a public hearing. We are open for public input, and the public will be invited to the workshop as well. Anybody wishing to address the commission? You all are tired, I know. Now, this is the important part of the year, and we need to sit down and really think of things, you know?
I was thinking, we have potential construction projects coming up too, so there's potential GRT from different...
Yep.
Yeah, so that's important. When we submit the budget, DFA has a specific questionnaire that we submit, so they're really wanting us to kind of drill down and explain, you know, have we lost businesses? Have we gained businesses? Just to support kind of the budget that we're submitting, especially if we're looking to increase our GRT revenues. They want to know how we're going to...
Yeah.
Yeah. So is it maybe a new business came to town, such as like Maverick? We would certainly incorporate that into next year's budget and hopefully see some positive increase in the gas taxes as well, so... And once again, I mean, a budget, it's a living document, so we do try very hard to get the interim budget as complete as possible. DFA doesn't really like you to make a lot of changes from the interim to the final, so we try to do a good job, but, you know, we always do anticipate quite a few changes before the finalists submitted July 31st.
Right. Any other comments from the commission? Hey, thank you. Item Z, deliberate and act on resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-six third quarter financial report. I guess that's Michael Ann.
Stayed up. Okay. Hopefully my voice will hold up. So in your packet this evening, we bring to you our third quarter report. I did print it on some large paper for you. Review it closely. So if you look at the financial summary as of March 31st, our ending cash balance is five million, twenty-three thousand, eight oh four seventy-two. And then if we take into account our required one-twelfth reserve, and then, of course, the CD that we recently invested a million dollars of our general fund reserves, that leaves you with an available cash of three million, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars. I've also detailed for you the ending cash balances and the other funds. We also did receive our April GRT distribution, which reflects the February business activity. You'll see that we're still about one point seven seven percent above our year-to-date general fund budget projections. See, I've also included the lodgers' tax comparison report. As I stated earlier, I am pretty optimistic that we will not experience any sort of a shortfall this year, and if we collect the same amount of revenue in the fourth quarter as we did last year, I think we're on target to reach that five hundred thousand dollar mark for revenues. Kind of this excise tax, revenue's been down about eight percent compared to last year, but I did want to mention that effective July 1st, the excise tax will increase one percent, so it'll go from twelve percent to thirteen percent. And then every year up until the year 2030, it'll increase another one percent every year. So that's something that we'll take into account with our interim budget. Gas tax revenues unfortunately have continued to decline, but we are optimistic that might see some recovery once the Mavet travel station is finished. The distribution for this month was eleven thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven, so I think that's probably an all-time low, unfortunately. And then if we move on to the actual unaudited financial statement, as far as the third quarter, let me look at our percentages. General fund percentages, revenue for the third quarter, we're at just slightly below seventy-five percent. A little bit of that could be a result of receiving less small cities assistance than we had budgeted. You'll see in my budget adjustment, the next item, we, DFA does require us to adjust that to reflect the actual amount of the small cities received, so we will be making an adjustment for that. And then, of course, under our executive budget, we do tend to run a little high just because I do pay our juvenile justice coordinator out of that line item until we've received all of the grant funds for the juvenile justice grant. Then I make those adjustments at the end of the year. So overall, general fund operating budget is running about sixty-two percent, so we're running under the seventy-five percent. So those are just some of the things that I look at when we evaluate our financial report. Other than that, we've had a lot of discussions lately with department heads just with regards to, you know, we only have three months left in the fiscal year, really two, any big-ticket items that they're looking to purchase, whether or not we could receive them by June 30. So we'll kind of take a look. There's some things in the budget currently that may have to carry over and be rebudgeted next year, so I think we're still seeing some supply chain issues, especially on probably vehicles and things like that. So I'm hoping that the fire department gets their vehicles that were recently approved by June 30. So other than that, you know, we're working on grant applications for next fiscal year, and then, of course, I didn't give you a copy of our grant, active grant listing, but there are quite a few grants listed on there that will expire June 30 or December 31st, so we're working really hard to monitor those, close them out, and not revert any funds. I stand for any questions?
Questions?
As usual, it's a lot of work, and we very much appreciate it.
Yeah.
So our third quarter report will be due to DFA by the end of the month, so we'll be working on that to submit by the deadline.
Entertained a motion?
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six third quarter financial report. Second?
We have a motion and a second, but I've got a question.
Oh, yes.
We had a resolution number twenty-five twenty-six, vacation of property. So this should be twenty-seven?
Do we budget adjustment?
Yep.
Oh, you know...
No.
It is twenty-seven.
The financial report should be twenty-seven. Item P was resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-six.
Oh, did I do two? I'm sorry, did I?
Should it have been twenty, should that one have been twenty-four and this one twenty-six? Well, we adopted it as twenty-six, so we have to change something.
I mean, I could change mine before you sign it.
Yeah.
This one says twenty-six on it, so it's twenty...
Yeah, I did do that. I apologize.
So this would be then twenty-seven?
Could I change mine to twenty-seven?
Yes, twenty-five twenty-six. Twenty-seven.
The financial report should be twenty-seven. And the budget adjustment should be twenty-eight. So twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Better to correct it now, so...
Yes.
Sorry, Barry, I forgot my, I needed to report to the side, so I kept looking at the budget adjustment.
Okay, so this one's going to be twenty-seven, and then the next one will be twenty-eight. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
Okay.
And since I need everybody's signature on this, I'll run and reprint it real quickly for everybody else.
I apologize.
I'll do my city manager's report real slow. So we, I guess we could, would you amend your, who made the motion?
It was me. Yes, I will amend it to read, approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven third quarter financial report.
I second that amendment.
Hey, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-seven. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Item AA, deliberate and act on resolution twenty twenty-five amended to twenty-eight, fiscal year twenty-five budget adjustment number twelve.
Mayor and Commission, we bring budget adjustment number twelve to you for approval. As I stated, I am making an adjustment for the actual small cities assistance that was received this year, which was fifty-four thousand, four hundred and one dollars less than what we had budgeted. We still do have some expenses related to the Kearney School project that the city is cash flowing for the abatement and architectural expenses. We are finishing up the action plan with HUD, and once that's complete, then we'll be able to proceed with reimbursement. So my goal is to, we'll have about three hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars, because some of it was from prior fiscal year that we'll need to submit for reimbursement from HUD. So those are funds that will go back into the general fund, and I would like to accomplish that task before the end of the fiscal year. Other than that, we're just doing some line item adjustments. I did go ahead and put in the Welcome Center HBAC in anticipation of your approval this evening, so that we can go ahead and issue the PO and get that on order. Other than that, I did go ahead and add in the new police, the grant for the radios that you also approved, the quote this evening. The grant is two hundred and fifty thousand, so there will be a little bit of money still available. I think in talking with the chief, he mentioned that all of this equipment is housed on Goat Hill, and so it didn't include a generator, so I'm not sure if that's something that maybe we might have to come back at a later date and consider that, but just know that you still have a little bit of money left in that grant, and we have till June of 2028 to spend the funds. So even though it's considered emergency funding, we still have till 2028 to spend the money. So that's all I have for you this evening. Is there any questions?
Any questions?
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-eight, fiscal year twenty-five budget adjustment number twelve.
I'm motioning to vote to adopt. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item BB, city manager report.
Point of note, should technically be JJ.
I, at the moment, is the last name on the agenda.
It does itself, in honor...
While Michael Ann is getting the papers filled up. Mayor and Commission, bottom line upfront, as you can see from tonight's commission meeting agenda, the city is involved in a lot of projects and supporting a lot of events. There is more to come, a lot more. In the coming weeks, we'll be addressing a number of infrastructure projects, budget decisions, beautification undertaking, economic endeavors, and strategic plans. All this is taking place with state ambiguity and even more federal uncertainty. We will keep the public informed as these events play out. For the treasurer, the treasurer and I have started the high-level budget discussions for FY twenty-five twenty-six. The police is recruiting for four officers and one dispatch. The fire department has completed this year's wildland training and is ready to respond locally in the county and wherever else needed. Public Works, solid waste has seen an increase in usage of the transfer station due to the warmer weather. Engineering is working with Mitchell and Cruz to get the Schuler electrical replacement project back out to bid, as we did not receive any bids last round. Facilities, Leonard Zamora has finished a complete painting of the gym and waxing of the floors. The final outcome looks great. The city clerk attended New Mexico Municipal League's Clerk's Spring Conference in Taos on April 8th through 11th, and is now the District III Alternate Director. With Economic Development, the Director of Community and Economic Development, well, with work first, training and education innovators to further align public, private, and nonprofit workforce development initiatives in northern New Mexico and southern Colorado. In mentions of dispatches, shout out to Larry Marcus, Adrian Mendez, and Randy Chitrillo with the Parks Department. They have been doing irrigation system repairs and upgrades. Vault fields are in excellent shape for this time of year. And finally, closing thoughts. Next Tuesday, the mayor and a few city officials will hold the groundbreaking ceremony for the new Maverick gas station on South Second Street. This is an exciting event that we have looked forward to, but for a few minutes, I'd like to talk about the name Maverick and that it shares with the hotel nearby. By definition, a Maverick is an unbranded range animal, especially a motherless calf. Over the years, it has come to represent an individualist who does not go along with the group or party. For example, the TV series or the movie Top Gun. But the name comes from Samuel Augustus Maverick, a Texas lawyer, politician, land baron, and signer of the Texas Declaration of Independence. When a client gave Maverick four hundred cattle to settle a twelve-hundred-dollar debt, he had no use for them, so he left the cattle unbranded and allowed them to roam freely. Neighboring stockmen recognized their opportunity and seized it, branding and herding the stray cattle as their own. Maverick eventually recognized the folly of the situation and sold what was left of his depleted herd, but not before his name became synonymous with unbranded livestock, which evolved into nonconformists and then to rebel. The whole world loves a Maverick, and the whole world wants the Maverick to achieve something nobler than simple rebellion, or as Alan Rickman stated, "Maverick is a word which appeals to me more than misfit. Maverick is active; misfit is passive."
All righty. Thank you, sir. Any other closing comments, Commissioner Hennyfield?
I had an occasion to visit with Mr. Treheal, and he'd like to visit with you about 801 North Fourth. We may be able to avoid the expense of that demolition.
Okay.
That's one we comment. Saved you fifteen thousand dollars.
Mayor Proterm?
Come and watch the girls' softball this Saturday, last home game. They're doing awesome. They play Clayton, eleven and one.
Commissioner Schuster?
Happy birthday, and don't forget to go see the kids' film festival, the Junior Virtual Film Festival. It will be on Sunday at four p.m. at the L. H. Hunter Theater.
All right, and my closing comments are, once again, congratulations to Rattone Main Street. Job well done. This meeting stands adjourned.